Yay.
Anyways.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It's got, it seems like much of legal work for us. Um, can we, we're having a meeting Thursday, correct?
Yes.
So I'll send out the email.
We have a big one?
A conference head meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, here.
Yeah, what time?
Seventeenth, yes.
And that's, and that's supposed to be during the hour of clock.
I don't know, I mean, that's entirely up to you guys, I guess. Who is it? Who do I have do it from the grapefruit station?
Do it? I don't know, who do we have? You guys should say, no, it isn't, it's a department head or supervisory personnel.
Oh, we can discuss it after. Okay. I got an email from, from Nick Adams at Katari Analytical regarding the water sample, asking me again when he may, he may be able to come and do it. He's not in big rush, he just doesn't want to drop the ball. So as you know, I've made several phone calls, left messages, I got no response. I sent a, a letter to them on seventeenth of October and I have not heard anything. Requesting that they contact us in regard to the water testing. So I don't know how you want to proceed.
No, we haven't, did he ever get to touch with you at all?
Who?
Nick Adams.
She's talking, that's what I'm talking about.
The homeowner, the homeowner.
Oh, the homeowner, I'm sorry.
The homeowner hasn't responded back, so I don't know, one of us should go out to see them? Because we have to test this water.
Good job, you.
I mean, is it?
You're going right by them.
You want to go by and see them? Is there?
I go by then, just, just.
Is there a sample, um, did he send us a sample? Does he go get it, or do we send it him a sample?
No, no, he's gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I should ask him. Because he's coming.
And he didn't play each other, right?
Yeah, well, he needs to find out when he will be able to say that he can.
Dana, you shut the door? At least just push it to.
I need a date and all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, so that would be great. All right, so you're gonna check on that? Well, I'll have to get a free call.
Okay. Give it to me before I go home.
Okay. Okay, the next thing I have is I got a phone call from a gentleman who owns property on Cemetery Road and his house is beyond where the road ends. He's after the campground, right after the campground. And he's trying to sell the house, but he needs a letter saying that Cemetery Road is a public road that is not town-maintained. And, and looking at the map, it's got, you know, it's dotted lawns beyond this little, beyond the cemetery. But he talked to, or I, well, I asked Tommy about it and he said that as far as he knows, it's a town road, it's just not maintained.
Yes, discontinued.
Well, is that true?
Well, we'd have to go back and look in the ordinances.
We have, we've been, people have been trying to find this information, nobody can seem to find it.
Laura used to have a whole thing on roads, was there anything?
But that paper that she had, that I had looked at, I don't think it tells you specifically when it was discontinued, or if it was closed, or what the deal was. So basically, I mean, so he, he lives beyond the campground and then there's another one or two houses beyond that. And he needs to, um...
Isn't one way that we tell father that is when the snowplow stops?
Well, but there's a difference, I think.
Is considered private road beyond that, they maintain your road?
I don't think it's private, I don't think it's private.
When can we plow it?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean anything.
Can we maintain it anyway?
It could be just discontinued.
That is just what I'm trying to say.
To town, it'll just continue the road.
Trying to say that it's a town-owned road, but it's not town-maintained.
Yes, we have several of those.
So, anyway, they need, they need a letter saying it's a public road and it's not town-maintaining. Now, there was somewhere that, I don't know if Dale found it or what, but in 1964 it was voted not to maintain the road anymore. But we looked, Mike and I looked through all those town reports and we could not find anything. So basically, he can't, he can't sell it until he gets something saying that...
I think I want to know what the state, what the state says a private road is, or a town-maintained road.
The state?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's...
There must be a law or somewhere, it might say something.
Yep. Well, that's probably true, but nobody seems to know whether or not that that's the case on that road, so I don't know where you want to go with this.
Well, it makes it different from any other road that we weren't maintaining.
I don't know, Royce, because I don't maintain the roads, I don't know.
Well, we usually, didn't that, what we usually do is we say it's a private road and that's it. We don't, whether it goes into, whether it goes into a housing development?
Some roads are...
Or whether it's a residential road?
You'll see in ordinances that they say that they were town roads, but they're unmaintained as to so far, and we only go so far on them. And that's exactly how they'll say, they're still town roads, but they're unmaintained. It's just worded differently, that's all. But it's not listed as private, because we, we probably built it, we probably created it.
It's a closed road though, isn't it?
I don't know, I have no idea, I haven't gone back.
There's a lot of different things.
I mean, what's on top of roads too? What's that? Closed road. But people maintain it through the winter on the road, the town doesn't do it.
That's part. But it can be quite a few, like if a town's still on with the road. But we probably still do the ditching and all that stuff if we head to. You know, we could go back and take it back from the people if we, if we chose to, if people wanted to.
I think you'll find that you think there's a process to do that too nowadays, a legal process.
We need to figure out what Cemetery Road completely. We're gonna just figure out what's going on with Cemetery Road.
Well, I'd say, yes, the town, the town by the road ends where the snowplowing ends. It's basically on that one, it's on the hot top, isn't it?
That's how far it's town-maintained, it doesn't mean that it's not town-owned and that it's not a public road. Okay. So, well, who do you want to have researches? Because, I mean, this gentleman has been calling for a couple of weeks, looking for an answer. Nobody can seem to give him one.
You mean to get into it and check it out? It's gonna need a couple of phone calls here and there. I'll look at it from the legal side.
And that's me, I mean, you guys, that's up to you guys, I don't, I don't make a difference tonight.
That's what you want to do, I think, I didn't want to get into legal wrangling with somebody over this because of that terminology.
I haven't looked through a lot of things, all I did was look in the town reports with Mike.
Okay.
I think he looked a little further and couldn't find anything. I don't know if Dale did, I think she might have looked. And I've got that paper that we have from a long time ago.
And Tommy didn't know?
They show the date that it was discontinued.
No, well, he seems to think that it is a town road, but not maintained. But he doesn't feel that it's up to him to write something saying that that's the case, because it wouldn't, it would have been a select.
Of course it would, yeah.
I would think that if it was a pub, if it was a private road, it would be in the deed, included in the deed of the owner.
Not necessarily if it was a closed road.
Well, if you own the property, you own the property, don't you? I mean, I just tried to help.
But it's private.
Yeah, if it's private, would it not be in their deed that, on the land?
Not in mine.
No, some of them.
My road's private.
Road. I tried to help. Thank you.
I think this is just history, you know, you have to try to be thorough.
I didn't get an answer to my question. Do you want me to look into it? If you do, I'll do, I will. See what that cop was gonna answer in a week or two.
Well, what, how do you plan on looking into it?
Time to call some lawyers and ask them, have them, show them some definitions.
Yes, but we need to look at our ordinances and make sure it's not listed there too. That's what we need to probably know, is look at the old books and see. Because we used to have a whole pile of stuff and like Sue said, they found something in 1964.
And did they, in some other ordinance, write up something different about it?
Well, that's just it, that's what we need to, I think we need to research through the books first. Like these guys have, that you look through, you know, right up to current, and then...
I mean, we just looked through the, um, we just looked through the old town reports to see what the warrants said, but we didn't see any specific question about Cemetery Road. So, I don't know.
I guess probably the question is, is, um...
Is it a public way, is basically what I think this guy wants to know, is it a public road?
As far as I know, once a road is closed, the ownership of that road gets to buy it. If there's two different landowners, one opposite of each other, each will get half of the road. Their land goes to the center of the road, technically.
But we don't know that it's a closed road.
If there's one landowner, they, they own the whole section of road. That's why you get the term private road.
Well, but it's not listed as a private road, it's not, that's what we need to know.
Long as somebody hasn't listed it.
I don't think it is, I think it, I think Tommy's absolutely right. I think it's just a town road that's unmaintained. So what does that mean? I guess probably that is the question, do you want to call the lawyer and ask them? What, that means if it's a town road and it's unmaintained, because I'm sure that's what it is. Because we go so far on it, we plow it so far, maintain it so far.
Well, because of Cemetery, right? That's considered a public part of the road?
Yeah, and I would ask them.
And that ends where, where we, where the town leaves off?
Here's the, that's the map.
Okay, sir, thank you.
And the lot, I highlighted there. Okay, so this, I don't know if you're supposed to, this is just an email that came for you guys. I have a municipal quitclaim deed here for Mark and Ellen Eldridge. If you guys could please sign that. I've got a couple of second minutes that you need to sign. Which week's minutes are those? Uh, September 12th and 19th. I think those are something you can just read.
Yeah.
I've got several things that need to be signed here. So this is a tree growth penalty.
Okay.
From Peter Sewell. He's taking 29 acres out of tree growth.
Next.
And it's all at $1,000 an acre, because this letter is from the forester, Dan, Don Winslow. And, let's see what he says here. Twenty-nine acres you are selling out of parcel six dash 18 consists of six acres of soft and 23 of mixed. So it starts out at 29, I mean, at $1,000 an acre and then you multiply the number of acres times whatever the state amount for soft wood is, whatever the state amount for mixed wood, and subtract it from that 29. And that has to be multiplied by how many years it is in tree growth. And that's the penalty you're to follow. Okay. These are both abatement denial letters.
Christine, can I ask you a quick question? So the minutes that she's asking you to sign today are both from September. We're still missing ones from August. Is there a reason why those, that one meeting in August is being skipped over?
Which meeting is that?
It'd be that 29th, August 29th.
Shouldn't they, we'll have to look.
Yeah, because eight twenty-two somehow got posted on there and then...
Well, some of them could be mine, two of my paperwork, and we haven't had a chance to go through that.
Yeah, eight twenty-two got posted and then the very next one that gets posted is nine eight and now she's presenting two after nine eight.
And that's because she may, Christine may have taken the minutes for that meeting and if she did, I haven't gotten them yet. This is for a flash of health, but thank you.
Take the minute?
Is she doing the minutes or is Jordan doing the minutes?
Who's doing the minute? Yeah.
I don't think we'll have a conversation about minutes right now.
That's what I'm trying to ask.
We're trying to get our paperwork.
Yeah.
Who knows who's doing it?
All right, let me see, this, I think I'm gonna save, yeah. These are abatements. This one here is...
That stuff needs to be discussed?
Yeah, it does, actually.
Yeah, you've, that's been coming in in a while.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, yes, there was a couple of them that you might want to hang on to till he comes in. That one I don't think. That one's not a waterfront one. And neither is this one. Yeah, this one's not.
It still needs to be discussed unless it's property.
You've got open discussion on those, is that what's going on?
I'm just looking at them, Royce. I have a name.
You could open them for discussion, Royce.
I'm just looking at them.
I'm gonna read these here for you guys, you can hold it out, you just could have to read them. This was a complaint that we dropped off last week, Thursday.
Has anybody gone out to look at this, either of these properties?
Well, that one got reassessed last year. Is that Roland? Yeah. So he just felt that it was, you know, it was too much, too high. So somebody should probably go look at it again.
I would say definitely.
And I think, I think you guys took pictures.
I believe so, seen or felt.
I do too, and, but he, you know, he said that the, I don't know, that there was a lot of work that needed to be done and he just felt that it was way too high.
That's usually determined by comparison methods, is it? Compared to how that house is, same, same size and that sort of thing? Same condition? Or it's not waterfront, I'll volunteer to get into it if you'd like. I'll do it, I'll work it over. Maybe even take a little picture or two. I haven't seen Roland since last year, so... You wanna look at that, Tom? And this one? We're here.
Okay, then I'm gonna hand you guys, excuse me, two things. One is the budget for the planning board for 2017 and '18.
Okay.
And the other is an email that was sent and asked to be forwarded to you regarding a 180-day moratorium on the marijuana facility issue.
What's this, just offering information soon?
Yes, yeah.
What that's supposed to involve?
Yeah, the idea that, you know, you guys...
The town of Elliot?
Yes, that's the information that they had.
Who, uh, who sent this in?
Laura.
I'll also look at this other, uh, application for abatement also.
All right. Okay, so Betty needs, you know, hold on to this.
These are very difficult budgets.
Yeah, she's gonna do that. And this is the other one. Okay, Betty.
Okay, for the appeals board, um, the only one that has actually any education, been to education classes is myself, so I would like to keep the $200. Do you have a copy?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, mine is all written on.
Oh.
I didn't know you were coming. Yeah, I can give you a copy. I'm sorry.
We're doing both appeals and, and...
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't you on the agenda?
Yeah. It's all right, I probably should give them a copy.
Oh, the agenda changed?
Yeah. Lord help me.
There was one item that changed, yeah. Yeah, because somebody came in last minute asking to be put on the agenda.
What's the change? I get on them all. See, I have a feeling that the advertising on the appeals board is too low, but I think I can get it out of supplies, because we don't use a lot of supplies.
What do you mean?
And we have supplies here.
Oh, have you, you mean, you've got the 150 broken out into...
No, I don't know what we use. We haven't used any supplies. So I'm gonna take that out, I'm gonna take it out, I'm gonna reduce it and put it into advertising, because we're $20 over already in advertising.
Oh, oh.
Which cost, which is costing us more than office supplies, which I would think we'd probably include coffee and whatever.
Because I don't...
We gotta hit a number on that, I mean, there's no way to know exactly what the office supplies are.
Right, because I give you guys all a copy and a whole packet, but I don't...
So I think that perhaps I can go down there. I just want to throw it into advertising, because I know that the cost is horrendous and I foresee that we will be having more of these.
Yeah.
So, and the advertising will probably go up again.
Beautiful out today.
Oh, dang.
Doesn't it?
Yeah.
Some example.
Was it 60?
It was beautiful, I was all, that's when I cleaned up my yard, I mean, because it was so nice. I was hot in this sweatshirt, huh?
Yeah, I'm sure, and the sun was beautiful.
I was like, oh my.
I had to take my father to the doctor and...
Oh my, I couldn't believe it. Not many more of those.
Jordan's gonna bring in a planning board, his budget committee though. He's got...
Well, you don't have to do planning board right now, you're gonna do appeals.
Appeals.
Appeals and...
Let me get the right... Appeals, oh, I'm sorry. All right, we'll go appeals, Tony. You want the budget committee first?
Certainly, I mean, these are such lengthy budgets, I want to know. Okay, the budget committee, we're in our, we're within our, um, amount for the year. What I'd like to do is decrease the supplies to $400.
Because you don't think you need so many?
No. And increase staff development to 350, so that, because I know that that class, I want to say that class is like $85, but I think it's, nobody's ever been to it and I think it's important. I don't want to change the bottom line, so the reality is, I just want to change those, um, columns.
So your total budget's 750?
Total budget's 750.
You said you want to increase the staff development?
Yeah.
Yes.
To 350?
Correct.
Okay.
And reduce office supplies to 400, so it comes out the same. I mean, office supplies is such a, and all of these are so difficult, because, you know, we don't count every piece of paper.
It doesn't change too much, as long as you need the same staff, you have the same booklets, the same...
Exactly, and I don't, I don't see, I mean, we just got new books. You know, it's a copy and that really, that really is the cost, but, I mean, we have new books, so they should last a few years.
I'm okay with that, are you guys okay with that?
As far as the changes go?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the budget doesn't change at all?
You want to take a vote on it, make it official, you can, or...
Sure.
This is actually a, this is actually immediately?
Yeah. Thank you. I guess I took a motion with the changes on budget committee.
To accept the changes? And accept the budget as written, it'll come in here?
Thank you.
Who's second?
Second?
Am I welcome, yes?
Second, Royce.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right, all right, so now we're going to appeals board.
Yep, appeals board, appeals board, um, staff development is okay at 200. What, the only concern I have is advertising, which we're over now, $20, which isn't much, but I'd like to kind of reduce the office supply and, and increase the advertising, because I see advertising as something that is never going down. And we don't use many office supplies, really. I mean, we don't have that many pack, packets.
So what were you thinking to decrease?
I was thinking, um, office supplies reduced to 100 and increase advertising to 150, with the same bottom line. It's really a manner of, I don't like negatives in my balance column.
You're gonna increase which one now?
Advertising.
Yep.
So the total would be 450?
330. 330.
330?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. 450, yeah. I looked at the wrong line. Yes, 450, which it is now, so there's no total change.
So, so your advertising, you said it went over to $20?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
But then how do they apply the 150 that we get when somebody applies for an appeal?
It goes to the general fund.
Well, I thought it was supposed to cut down on your expenses.
I don't think you can go that way. I think you have to-
That's how, I, this whole general fund thing.
Yeah, it doesn't-
It goes, it goes to the general fund, just like, um, ambulance goes to the general-
That's right.
It all goes to the general fund.
That's why we have budgets that you have to-
Which makes it difficult when you look and say-
Because that should be revenue to the appeals board. That's how I look at it.
I look at it that way too, but it's, that's not the way it is. So actually, we, we make more than we put out, I believe.
Probably.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, if we don't change it, we're good. I don't see a problem. I just like my columns to look good. It sounds funny, but I don't like to see the negatives in the, in the, you know, the minus $20 by the end of the year, we're getting minus 40. I don't like that.
And you think you'll be okay with your advertising at 150? I mean, you still have so many months to go. I mean-
Well, we, what do you think so?
Oh, I do. How mu, I mean, three, because I don't go with the Fosters.
Yeah.
We go usually with, um, Harrison and the, um, Smart Shopper. And that's, Smart Shopper I think is 30, $33 or something, and Harrison is 60.
So I mean, not, I don't see any other appeals be, well, we'll get some in the spring. I don't know, maybe, what do you think, Christine?
Well, I don't know, that's what I was asking you, I, I just-
I mean, I, I think that-
Well, how much did you spend on supplies?
I can't tell.
Maybe you can decrease your supplies to $30?
Well, I did. I wanted to decrease it to 100.
Well, what if you decrease to 50 and put another 50 in advertising?
Could do that.
Why don't you increase the budget to 500 and just make advertising?
Let's do, that's fine.
I mean, really-
Let's do it that way.
It's safer not, sorry.
So the bottom-
If you want, dime.
Yeah, the bottom is 500, uh, we'll put a-
That would be nice. 200 to advertising, and then 100 to supplies and 200 to staff development.
That's right. Two, four, five. That sounds, that sounds really reasonable.
So I guess I make a motion to change, um-
Yeah, let's get me straight on this. Staff, staff development, what's the new, what's the new price on that? What's the new number?
Staff development's still the same, 200. Is that what you got? And then supplies and office supplies to 100. And then other, down on the advertising would go to 200. Because that is the most expensive thing if they have-
It is.
So the total budget now would be 500.
So you've increased the budget?
By $50. So I guess I make a motion to accept the changes as we-
You got it.
All in favor?
Was, who's second, did you, was that a second?
No. You'll tell, you'll tell them, right? You'll tell accounting? Or do I go and tell?
Well, we, this doesn't happen until after it's, uh-
I know, I just want to make sure that he knows.
Well, that doesn't change the current budget.
No, it does not.
Yeah, this-
Oh, okay, as long as it gets in there, I don't care.
Yes, it has to be, you know, through the whole process, so, yeah.
You've got worse budgets to do, and why?
Where is your budget from?
My budget box?
No, the selectman's budget box. Why are they doing it on paper that's going to get tossed in the file and in two weeks they're going to tell us they don't know where it is? Where are your budget books? Roy's.
No comment.
Where are your budget books, Christine?
We need to move chairs.
What do you mean, you never have one? They have one every year. It's how you do your budget. I know, but that's what I'm saying, where are the budget books?
I don't know yet. I guess I'm going to try to move these chairs over this way, so you can-
Why? Maybe Ben knows, one last time. Do you have budget books, for this year, the budget committee?
I have a binder. Haven't received the new numbers yet.
I just asked for it. Today, I just asked for the new numbers, the numbers from last year today. Why would you want them before now?
Well, because if you're doing the budget, they should have their budget book.
I have.
No, you have budget, I'm talking about their budget.
Okay. Hello?
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Well, I'm Christine. It's nice to meet you. Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Hi. I, I wasn't at the last meeting, so-
Oh, I wasn't either.
Oh, see, I don't know who's in front of you, but I know you, because I've seen you several times.
Yep.
Do you know Russell?
Yes, hi.
Nice to meet you. And you are?
Jim Foster.
Okay, Jim. Just what I called him. Whole little job.
And who are you? I'm sorry.
Chester Colonna.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wallace. Right ahead. Ron Collins. Nice to see you.
Good to see you. Good to be seeing.
So we're here to talk about New Bridge, Road Bridge?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I wasn't at the last meeting, so you'll have to just fill me in.
Okay, well, I can go over what was discussed back then. I'm not sure what the purpose was, meeting today, um, uh-
You guys asked me to get them together to come in to meet with you.
Yeah. Because we've heard lots of stuff about, um, New Bridge and what it's going to be, um, if the state's going to fix it, or what's going on with New Bridge, um-
Yeah, the, um, I guess we'll start with, um, how, how we, how we work with when we have bridge needs that exceed what funding that we have. And it was probably 10 years or so that we faced the reality that, um, that some low, the lower priority bridges, that we would not be able to fund those for replacement. And, and so, over the past several years, um, a number of bridges have been, well, didn't receive, weren't receiving money for replacement, and, uh, a number have been removed. Um, and Lebanon New was, was one of those bridges. And at, at the meeting last time, um, I was sure to, to learn, um, all the, all of the impacts of not having that bridge there to the town, so that I could share that with the bridge committee in Augusta. And, uh, the, and, and what I learned was that, um, during the flooding event, that, that there were people in Milton that have to, that would travel across the New Bridge into Lebanon to, to get, to get to town. And also learned that, um, that Milton provides, um, fire protection and, uh, ambulance service to the people there in that, in that area of Lebanon, which is, and that type of thing is often the case when a, when a bridge is closed. There are some people that it's going to take longer response time. So, and we also, um, because we took into consideration that, that this is a half main bridge and a half New Hampshire bridge as, as well. So, the, um, the bridge did have, when it was open, um, fairly low traffic and it had, relatively low traffic. And, and the detour length, uh, fairly short, I believe five miles around. And, uh, so it, it, it falls within our area of, we can't know, these are, these are million-dollar bridges and we just can't afford that, we just don't have the money for that. And, uh, so it fell in that area, but, um, but there has been conversations over the years, and meetings over the years. And, uh, and there was always that, um, the conversation that when the time came when New Hampshire, if they were able to come up with a plan to fund their half of the bridge, that main dock people would meet with the town of Lebanon to discuss possibility of cost sharing. And that's what we talked about at the last meeting. So, so I went back and as a result, um, we, we have, um, we have the New Bridge in our proposed work plan. With, and it's in there with, um, this can be confusing, but it's with, with the state paying, of the main half, with the state paying 80% and the town paying 20%.
Okay. So what, what's that come up with, the numbers, roughly?
130,000 for the town.
130,000 for the town, no.
And that's a, so it's a 1.3 million dollar project, so it's, it's 10% of the entire project. And that's the same share that Milton has.
And do they have a timeframe on that, if we-
The, uh, New Hampshire would be the lead for the project, and they have it in, um, it's either 19 or 20. I, I think it was 19, but I, I know that I heard someone say 20 as well, so I'm not positive. But for my purposes, I'm assuming 2019. And that's the work, our work plan right now, which will be, um, we're in the final days of putting together the work plan, it's, it's, it's a three-year work plan, so it's 2017, 2018, and 2019, those three years.
Now, let's not say we're accepted, they're saying we're on the work plan. What does that actually mean?
It, it, it means that it's in the work plan, it's in the work plan. It's a plan, it, it always will be subject to available funding.
Right. And how much, how much is ahead of us for major bridge projects that would affect this? In other words, they're putting in a bridge down in Portsmouth, that's going to be state money, taking care of some of that?
Honestly, um, uh, the, um, any, anything that's lower priority is scoped as removal. I think there's like three removals, scope four, 2019. As a matter of fact, there was two, as of last week, we changed one replacement to removal.
Okay, that's, when you say removal, that's bridges that are existing now that are-
Yeah, that are at the end of their service life.
Right. And we, we, ours has obviously been that way for a long, long time.
Yep.
I don't know what the actual number of years is, are we talking 20, 28, 20, you tell me? It's been a long time.
So the way, the way that I see it is that, um, without the fact that this is a shared with New Hampshire, without the fact that there's flooding concerns with Milton, et cetera, et cetera, this would be a, this would stay a removed bridge in terms of main dock participation. But because of those things that we've, um, we look at is, if, if the town of Lebanon, if that, if this bridge is so important to them, that they're willing to participate in the project and that.
What is the status of the Hampshire funding?
When you say-
There, there's a-
The what?
There's that Milton and New Hampshire is set for their funding.
Yeah, they're ready to go.
Yeah, they're ready to go.
Now, what make, please be clear to me, what, when you say, are we willing to participate? Are we willing to put up the 130,000? Because that's what you did ask us last meeting.
The, the, um, I can't-
And we told you, yes.
Yeah. Well, yeah, you were going to look-
Because we felt that we had, we-
You have to go through a process, right?
Yeah, we'd have to through the process, but-
So how is that looking for you now, is that?
It's a matter of, it was a, it was a matter of, Tommy spoke about using the LRAP money that we had coming in anyways from the state, turn that plus a few thousand more to cover it. I forget what the actual numbers were on LRAP, but I think it's around 1, around 100 anyways, I would say.
And we always have money, and we have a bridge fund too that we never-
We have a, we have a bridge fund.
I think we have a lot in it, but we could-
Yeah, we can use that towards it, there's, so-
So we're, we're on, on that path.
We're on track, but what does that actually, where does that actually leave us? That puts us tentatively on a, on a 2019 schedule, right? Maybe after, after other projects are done. That's what I'm saying, that's just where, you know, what are we actually saying? Where do we really stand in the, in practical thought?
It, it, from what I'm hearing from you, I think you're in good, it's the same as well.
We understand pretty well.
I, there's no, there's no way I can tell-
Yeah, we understand.
Until, because it's all, nothing is for sure. You know, it's, I can, I, I wouldn't even tell you that the-
Right.
Sir Mildred Long is for sure, if it's, if the money isn't-
130,000's a lot of money too, and, and it's going to come from somewhere in the town, and we're voicing that we're willing to try and get that money up. We could even, if we've got time to add, might even pass it through a town meeting on a, on a ballot, possibly get it passed out.
Yeah, so taking out of LRAP and money that can be used elsewhere.
But what we want to know is, you know, we've been, we sell a taxpayer this for 130,000 and they take it, they say, yes, go with it, by all means, then we're still looking at 2019 maybe. And that is behind other projects that are obviously more important to the state.
So I, so I need, so I need to go back, because this is kind of, this is new ground. And, and so, um, so I'll have to go back and see what type of commitment that we, in writing that, that's what you're looking for.
That'll be appreciated, that way we could, and, you know, I-
To see the plan.
Perhaps just explain, no matter what town you're in in Maine, any little town, you've still got to, you've still got to-
Well, it sounds, it sounds to me like both parties have the funding and ready to go with it.
Yeah.
We just got to expedite the timetable to move it up to the front burner, so to speak, to, to get it going.
Yeah.
We're going to add down, that, the town has the money, state has the money, obviously, but it doesn't fit the timetable of the community here, that being Lebanon. And also Milton Mills, I know, wants the, the bridge replaced as soon as possible. And everybody is on the same page as far as expediting it, the funding is there, um, somehow we got to move this along, I think, while we have the funds.
Yeah.
Because everything can change very quickly, depending on priority changes.
Yeah, but, so we're, um, so we're looking at construction in 19 or 20. Uh, we, I could, and this is, this is more, at this point, more up to New Hampshire, but, uh-
We have to, and like I say, we have to tell our taxpayers something, yeah. I'm quite sure that they do, they would probably go with this and would absolutely want to go with it for that, for that amount of shit, but-
Yeah, well, with the, um, in other, in other circumstances, you probably have some town-only bridges that are low use, classified, it's low use of redundant-
How about, need work too?
Yeah, but, no, but I'm, I'm just-
We have our own, we have the bridges up, so we need to do that.
Just as an example, that we, we cost share with low use of redundant bridges, and, and when we do, we do enter into a contract, so this, I, there will, there will be a con, usually that happens, um, it, it would happen like early 19 before they would develop a contract, but you're looking for something sooner than that. So I'll have to, so I'll have to find it.
We'd like to see something in writing that-
But this is, this is-
They would say the state, what the state was willing to do, is just, cannot say in writing that we're willing to do this.
That would say preliminary, the state pays 80%.
Then we've got numbers, we can show on, on voters. Then we've got numbers, we can show our voters upon this.
I mean, because when we put it as an article to the voters, we need to say the state's gonna pay eighty percent and we would pay the twenty percent or what, you know, however that's divvied up. You know, let's say Milton, Lebanon, and state of Maine, state of Maine, whoever. So that when we put it on there that way, and they might be more apt to say, okay, this is really how much it costs to fix this bridge.
A nice letter of intent would be real good here. That way we'd know on state's part, without-
Okay, I understand.
And we can say, okay, this is what we're basing, what we're basing things on, and that's what, that's what the voters would make, do the same.
Mr. Fossey?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Fossey, I believe I spoke to you and I thought you told me that presently there was no other town that you were doing this kind of cooperative funding in the state. You know, project like this where you were asking the town, on a town, on a state owned bridge, and a state maintained bridge, that you were pressuring them to come up with a portion of the cost of replacing the bridge. Is that true?
Pressuring.
That's true, yes, but we, those, those bridges were closed.
And they're not being fixed? They're just gone?
Yeah, this, this is, I mean, this is, after the bridge has been closed and removed, we've had towns that have, and I gave this example last time, I was here, the town, down in Bridgeton, where we closed the bridge and, and on that bridge, the substructure was, was okay. And so they wanted to, at the time, they wanted to build a pedestrian bridge on those abutments. And the abutments were good, so we said, fine. So when we did the bridge removal project, we removed the superstructure, left the abutments in place. And then they would come in and build the new, well, they decided they wanted, it's not a lot, a lot more to build a bridge that will carry cars, pedestrians. And so they ended up building a two-lane superstructure, this school there. So, so that's, so that, that type of thing has happened. And I think something similar happened in Freeport that way. Where we've gone and removed a bridge, but the town wanted to have a bridge there. And they did it on their own.
I just want to make one other thing clear that I thought that you told me, I thought you told me that Lebanon theoretically could commit to paying a certain amount, and you might decide it doesn't rise to the ability of the state to fix it on a particular year. Or you also said that Lebanon might decide not to contribute anything, and you might decide to go ahead and replace it at fully at state expense because it would seem to be appropriate for public safety and in the best interest of the state too.
No, I think, all I recall saying is that if, if Lebanon was to offer to pay for a share of the project, that that would increase the priority for us.
But not guaranteed, does it guarantee it though?
No, I mean, I can't, there's no guarantee here today.
Or if we commit the money? If we commit the money, is there a guarantee?
Not yet, not until, not until we have a commitment from Maine Dawg, which we don't right now.
I've got another question too, second. Some, there's been a concern expressed to me from probably half a dozen different residents up that way, people that use the waterway there. Is there some kind of a plan drawn for that bridge yet? As, something that'll show the clearance from, from high water level to the bottom of the bridge? Because that, as it has been, the way that other bridge was designed, people could travel back and forth under it, well certainly boats sometimes, but, and that's, that's kind of a concern people are asking about. Are they gonna, is there just gonna be a bridge put in there that leaves no room for anybody to pass through anymore? Because they did trap, they used that to travel between Florence, where that's part of the river.
No, I, I, I'm sure that they haven't developed any plans yet. Because they haven't, the fund, the funding hasn't, what happens is, it, it, where a charge number is developed and now people can stop to work on it. And that hasn't happened.
How could we be assured that, that when it, when it goes into the actual planning stages, that that'll be considered, that we can see what we're gonna get?
There will, there will be public meetings that, that happen.
Okay.
Just as soon as they come up with a preliminary plan. So you can actually see the drawings and have all those questions. And there's time at that, to make changes if necessary at that time. It's, yeah, I mean, that, that, that happens every, every bridge that-
You can imagine where we'd be sitting if somebody comes in there and travels the bridge in there with a foot and a half water level, you know, distance between the top of the water and the bottom of the bridge, the way they weren't used to using it.
There was enough clearance for a small boat to go under before, and that's-
Yeah, they would, yeah.
You couldn't get this, any of the sailboats through there?
No, there would never be room for that.
Hit it. So the town will be able to see this bridge before you start building it?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, before it goes into final design. So there's a preliminary, there's a preliminary drawings and plans, yeah. There's a, there was a preliminary design report that's actually developed that they go through and they look at, well, it's hydrology, but you're not, it's pounded water, so that's not really an issue there, but-
Okay. Yeah, so that would be a concern, I think we have, when you go back. Just one more thing.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Fossey, I'm sorry to, but we've heard so many stories about this. I just want to get the timeline correct, my mind. So we would have to commit to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That would come first. And then the state would look at a timeline for replacement? I mean, what comes first? Which is the chicken, which is the egg? What comes first?
We, we have, by putting it in the work plan, that is the plan, that is the schedule.
Okay, so you, it's in the work plan now for nineteen or twenty?
Yes.
So we, we're looking at having to have a hundred and thirty thousand between nineteen and twenty? And it, it, could that number increase as labor increases and as, you know, materials increase? Could that increase or is that our number, a hundred and thirty thousand?
Good question. I know that sometimes when we make these agreements with towns that we, that you're locked into your amount and if there's an overrun that, that we pay for that.
Mm-hmm, okay. So then that, then the next question is, we'd be on the work plan for nineteen or twenty, but there is no guarantee for nineteen or twenty, but does that, if we don't get done in nineteen or twenty, do we get put on the work schedule for twenty-one or does that bump us entirely? And how, how is that decision made?
Well, it's, yeah, the, the next, if you, if it doesn't happen in nineteen or twenty, twenty-one's a whole move.
So there's no, if it doesn't happen in nineteen or twenty, if we don't make that work schedule, if we fall to the bottom of it, we'd have to start basically the whole thing all over again trying to get on a work schedule?
Hmm, I wouldn't want to go that far.
Sorry, I'm a bit of a pain in the neck, but I want to know before I, before I talk to people about a hundred and thirty thousand, just sitting there waiting for you guys that may not ever, you know what I'm saying, a hundred and thirty thousand for this town is a lot of money to sit there.
I understand your question. I don't, I don't think I can answer that. I think I can get you an answer to that, but I don't think-
Could you? Okay, I'll give you my email before you leave.
I think, my understanding of it, the hundred and thirty thousand is really our intent to expedite us to get the bridge paperwork in play.
No, that's our share of the bridge.
No, it's your share, the share of the bridge.
Just the share, but I mean, you want us to say that we would commit to that, to do this? Doesn't that expedite, is that, isn't that with the state? Not expedite beyond nineteen, but help us get further into nineteen, saying, okay, both these towns have come together as a unit, and they're willing to do this, they're willing to do that. That's what that's all about.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that all happens at contract time. And, and it's, it's, so my experience has been there's no real commitment until there's a contract. And, and the problem is that, that's, that's too late. We really need to know. So you're asking for an early commitment or contract. And that's something that I have to get an answer to. So I gotta, I gotta stop freaking out.
Except that we can show to these people in town that-
Because if we're gonna ask for this, for the people, we need to tell them some details on how it's gonna work, when, where, how, how much.
I'm gonna ask this group here this afternoon, refresh my memory, just how long have we been talking about replacing this bridge? And it was torn down, has it been three years, five years?
It was two thousand twelve. It's when it got torn, torn down.
You couldn't use it, you couldn't, still couldn't use it for a lot of-
Right, you couldn't use it before then.
Yes.
You could use it pedestrian, but not, not current.
Four years essentially, a four and a half years.
We lost automobile traffic across there about a year before it was taken out. So it was funny about it.
Right.
Okay. So this has been a while.
This has been a while. There's a lot of residents that are pretty set about it. There's a lot, a lot that are interested in it. And they do ask us if we're up there, or they have like in the office occasionally, what we're doing.
They want to know what the progress is, if any, so, then I don't blame them.
Businesses on both sides.
Right, not only that, there's businesses that follow.
We have to claim that, you know, there's two towns involved, two states involved.
Yeah, it's complicated.
It's a little complicated, sure.
But it always seems to work down, force of a kind, it always seems to work there.
Mr. Fossey, I'd like to ask one more question from the flip side. Is there, is there a chance that if we decide not to give the money, the hundred and thirty thousand, because there's nowhere in statute or nowhere, like I said, it's, it's a Maine, Maine owns the bridge. And on, on the list of bridges, on, under the Maine website, for the state of Maine, it says it's state maintained. So is there a chance if we did not pay the hundred and thirty thousand, that the state would still replace it? Or are you saying if we don't pay the hundred and thirty thousand, it's not gonna happen?
There, there is a remote chance.
And how, what, what factors, what factors into that remote chance?
We need a prayer.
It's, 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 it's a determination that will be, I mean, the bridge committee that I'm a part of may make a recommendation, but it's, it's up to higher people than, than the committee and DOT. The commissioner signs a work plan.
Any questions?
I take it that your presence here tonight means you're taking an interest in this whole situation?
Oh, definitely. I have some time and, well, the last I heard was that New Hampshire was not ready. At that particular time, two thousand eleven, twelve, Maine was available, had the funding available. The current commissioner, that being David Bernhardt, he likes partnerships. The more, the more key parties involved in a project, the better it is. Because everybody has a piece of it. Which in a lot of cases is a very good thing. It does help to speed projects along, everybody takes pride in it, everybody's contributed to it. It works. And that, that's been his philosophy, and I commend him for it. But I do know this project has been sitting around a long time. My recollection is that New Hampshire did not have the available funds, and neither did Milton at that time. So I'm hearing today that they have the funds, they're ready to go. We have the funds. You know, if this project was to be shovel-ready tomorrow, when we started doing it, the funds would come from Lebanon of ten percent, around a hundred and thirty thousand, the state would pick up the rest. Now, I don't know what schedules are for, for, for bridges here in Maine. But I do know this has been sitting here dormant for a long time. So I can, as your state senator, I will contact folks that I know at headquarters and see if there's some way we can expedite this. And I don't want to offend you guys either.
Yep.
But sometimes there's a political angle to things, or sometimes there's not. So I'm gonna-
We'll have a town meeting, regular town meeting, well, coming up first of Maine.
Yep.
We probably could get something on the ballot there, as far as the voters go.
Yep.
There is a possibility of special town meetings. That's happened in the past.
But you have your allocation now for local roads assistance program. You have that sitting there now.
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, if you're a-
We could go there, which is gonna take out most of the damage.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Well, all I can say to you folks here this afternoon is that I will mix inquiries about it. And I'm not gonna sit and guarantee anything either.
Nope, nope. We understand this.
I've been caught on that thing a couple of times on different things. So I, I will mix inquiries in your behalf. That's all I can do. These gentlemen work for the department, they're giving you the facts as far as they know of them. And we'll go from there.
And we all, as a town of Lebanon, do appreciate what you're all doing, trying to get this project going.
And I know you folks here, the voters, like, man, I know you've had a lot of inquiries from townspeople, saying, when is this gonna happen? What, what's going on? You probably can't go to the gas station and get a gas bottle, so hey, what's wrong with that bridge?
Depends on what part of town you live in.
Based upon what some of the columns are saying now, what needs to be done on another level to be considered for doing it sooner? If I can hear the person who may be my answer?
You talking to him? Oh. I think he's, he's, he's like you.
They're saying that you can win support. Lebanon's ready.
Yeah, I've said that, yeah.
They will be ready. Milton and the state of New Hampshire is already ready. And are you able to give guidance as to what next step you need to make?
Well, it's, it's, I think we just have to, we have to wait for the work plan to get signed and finalized, so that it's, nothing really happens until the money is-
I guess, I think I understand what they're just asking you to.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
And I guess that, what, what we're trying to find out is, does the governor have to sign an order to do this? Basically, is that what goes on?
Well, he's, he's, there's a work plan.
Yeah.
Like the O.S.A.
To get the whole plan started.
What the O.S.A. is, the plan and work, the work is planned. Maine DOT does that throughout the state. I mean, and they have different divisions of Maine DOT. And they all have their priority lists, and they're submitted, and there's a, there's a work plan put forward.
And they like New Hampshire, do they have a, I guess we'll call it a bridge committee? That's what you're trying to ask?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the senators, I agree completely with them, is there's, there's, there's us doing our business and then there's, there's a political, and I don't, you know, that, so, so things can change.
We hope they can. We're all open to that.
I'm sorry, I just said, you were saying now you have to create a work plan. I thought we were already on the work plan for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. I mean, that's, we're already on that work plan, so a work plan doesn't have to be created, kind of a job plan, right?
What happens is that over the past several weeks, we, we got the final draft of the work plan and-
For nineteen, twenty?
For, for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Okay.
And for our review, and everybody reviews it, and they look for errors and things. And, and, and people up above the committees are overseeing it. They're looking at the balance of where the money is going. You know, one thing they look at is they look at, you know, they should, they're, make sure that you take care of these higher priority quarters. You know, that's, you know, they, and then, we all look at that, but then there are changes as a result of that. And we think this might be the final draft, but, okay, no. A week later, we're getting the next final draft, and so, we've been getting one a week for the past several weeks, the final draft of the work plan. It's not done until the commissioner signs it.
I would still put, are we putting a price on our life here? By not being able to get fire equipment across that particular place? Are we, ambulances?
Yeah.
Even right down, if somebody broke an arm, or they cut their finger or something, whatever, does that extra few minutes? How important is that? To me, it's quite important, it's our people.
Right, but if you have, if you have that bridge, and there's 600 ADT, and then you have the same bridge over here...
Now, you're saying yourself, you're traveling five miles.
But what I'm saying is, our priority process is...
And travel, five miles on detour.
If there's, if there's 10,000 cars traveling at four miles versus, you know, it's a high...
I mean, that don't make sense.
I thought it would make more sense that the people's health is more important than the cost.
We actually look at the...
What if you had three people that were on oxygen tanks on the Lebanon side, they ran out of oxygen, so winter storm, EMTs, you get it to their house, from Milton or Lebanon, so you've got three more there. What about the senior citizens that live on the Lebanon side that aren't getting the correct medical help, or are in real trouble?
That detour you mentioned earlier, five miles, that's basically what it is.
Yeah, and it's usually, a lot of it is really a combination between the number of cars and, or in the miles, really.
Perfect travel conditions, 60 miles an hour, even though they're not supposed to, our limit is, I believe, 35 on that road, on those concerns.
60s more like it, though.
Yeah, that almost doubles your time that it takes to, Milton's our closest responder up there, that's what I'm saying.
But what I, I looked at the, I looked at bridges that were in 2019, and I looked at the bridges that were under 1,000 ADT.
See, how long is it, how old's our statistics you're using on that bridge now, you're five years old.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, there's been so much new building back there, you can't say it would be the same.
But with, but with the best traffic count that we have on all of these bridges, looking at those with under 1,000 ADT, there were, there were about nine in the work plan for 2019, which Lebanon is one. Three, three, well, there's actually two removals in that, the one, there was one that was a replacement, it's being, now it's, it looks like it's gonna become a removal. Then we have we have three that have detours above 50 miles.
What's your population though, in those areas? Does it match ours? And the reason I bring that up is because more people means you need to use those roads more. We should have already seen a way...
Yeah, that's reflected in the...
Typically, when you replace a ridge like this one here with similar environments, what kind of structure do you put in there?
Oh, that's, is it 50, that's many?
No, it was about 100.
94 feet. Typically, that might be like a two-spin roof.
So how, why would that not fit?
But if they want, they want, they go 100 feet, that's not a lot, that's too...
So how wide would that be? And why would this span be?
That's a two-lane road by both sides of the bridge.
Right.
I think it's three or four spans.
That bridge was...
Yeah, it was, but I mean, they'll probably want to minimize the number of spans. They'll probably go with longer spans, but I think that it's...
It should be replaced with a two-lane bridge, not a one. I understand it was like a one and a half before, so it really looks like a one-lane bridge, when it was a wooden bridge.
Well, not only that, we didn't have the commercial entity back there that we're getting ready to have. We have two brand-new buildings going in back there, which are quite large, and to expect Lebanon's fire EMS to get to them in case of an emergency, when Milton would be right across the bridge, you know, I mean, I understand that it's our responsibility to have let them build in an area where there isn't such a quick response, but I'm just saying, with the size of these commercial buildings that are going in down there on T and Wentworth Road, we have to be concerned, you know, we don't have the firepower without Milton to put out a fire in a large commercial. No, it's our new pot facilities. That's why you don't know about it, Senator.
The police or the ambulance will pick up people from there, and now there's...
Aren't you proud of us?
It was an accident, a really bad accident, you're waiting a long time to get something out of the water.
But I mean, I'm just saying, with a commercial facility that size, because we're talking, and I think it was, what is it, 250 by 100-foot buildings going in, and that's quite a large grow facility? And, you know, without that, we have, you know, older fire engines, and we have no ladder trucks. So I mean, now we're talking about, we really need to count on Milton if there was a problem with those commercial buildings, and so, you know, my concern is now, if they're going to start building commercial facilities on that end of town, we really need to make sure that that bridge is large enough to hold fire trucks, and that we can get those mutual aid people over here.
I think that all comes in the hearing when you guys start really planning the bridge, and that's when we come and say, this is what we'd like to see happen here. You know, we'd like to be able to have boats go underneath it, and we want it wide enough for our fire trucks, you know, all that stuff. And that's when we really have to get our voice out and say, listen, this is what we want for this bridge.
Yeah, I'm not so much concerned in saying what I want, I'm just so much concerned in saying, don't pass us by, because we don't have the ordinances to restrict growth in that area, and it's coming, and it's coming fast, and we're gonna be in a lot of trouble if we have an incident on that end of town. So...
Anybody have any other questions? I appreciate you guys coming.
A pleasure, my ladies.
Thank you, Senator, good to see you again.
Good seeing you.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
Making a note, Deb Wilson, pain in the neck, if we don't get that bridge, she'll hound us for the rest of our life.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer, I got two questions to answer, and so, what do I send those to?
You can send them to me if you want. I think you've got my email, love, selectman.
It's in the municipal director.
Yeah, I can, I can...
Oh, I've been, we've been...
Yeah, we have.
Okay. So I'm gonna just, so I'll send it to you.
I'd like to have email mine up to me during...
Okay.
Because I copied them anyway, but that's fine.
It's Royce, he's, Royce Arheth, I'm sorry, R O Y C A R, H E A T H.
Royce Arheth?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's R O Y C A R.
You use it so much, Royce.
Yeah, it's all written together.
All written together?
Yeah, and email dot com. Sorry about that. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you all. So what happened anyways?
It's just the bad being getting worse.
That's not fine, what a pain in the town.
Behind ya.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we'll motion a little executive session for personnel matters.
And it is what, a quarter past four, first?